Twenty twenty-three of the city council to order. I'd like to explain the disaster plan. If there would be a tornado, we would be going down towards Sarah Beerman's office, the treasurer's office, and going, taking the stairs downstairs. And if it would be a fire, we would be going out this door. Since the meetings are being videotaped, it is important that everyone speak directly into a microphone when speaking. And now we'll start with roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderman Duco. Alderman Eris. Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Ostov.
Here.
Mayor, Duco and Eris are excused.
Thank you very much. Now roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Beerman.
Present.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Ice Can't.
Here.
Fire Chief Stinson.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Matriot.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Eric Walls.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross.
President.
Director of Human Resources William Clay. Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser. Clay and Kaiser are excused mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No public hearing this evening, but we would like public participation. So if you are here for public participation, please raise your hand and when we call on you, come forward and state your name and address. Anyone for public participation?
Hello, everyone. I'm here out of concern for the portrait banner of Gustav and Sophie Kerner on the corner of Muscoda and Avian. When I first spoke against the idea of having a portrait banner displayed, I was met with a response of how instrumental Gustav Kerner was in the abolishment of slavery, as I need, as if I needed a history lesson, and was made to feel as though I should be happy that a white man did something for black people. Yes, this really did happen. Why was such a statement even made to me? And it left me open to believe that there are others in this community who feel the same way. Although he may have been a great politician, I would prefer not to see his face on my way home. It's creepy and it looks like an obituary that now has a permanent stamp in the back of my head. When I see this portrait banner, I'm not thinking about the historic district or how great this neighborhood is. I'm instantly being thrown back in time, wondering what it was like for black people during this era and why weren't they seen. It leads me down a path, thinking about the past that doesn't depict a positive representation for me as a resident of this community. Belleville doesn't have the best track record when it comes to inclusion, and knowing that this particular banner was motivated by someone's personal agenda, it doesn't surprise me. It only solidifies selfishness and abuse of power that still exists within this community, and that is not right. From my understanding, the idea to hang the banner was to highlight some of the beautiful homes that are in the historic district that residents take pride in preserving. The banners are there to add visual beauty that will hopefully attract more residents who want to become a part of this neighborhood. The banner should not be used to highlight a specific individual, that is what the Kerner museum is for. But instead, the only thing that's being highlighted by this portrait banner of Gustav and Sophie Kerner is of ownership of the neighborhood and that the historic district and some of its representatives are frozen in time, which could also be a reason why it's divided and so hard to see growth in the neighborhood. I would like to ask that please take it down.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record?
Marie Banks.
Thank you very much. Next, public participation? Yes, Mr. Enyard.
Good evening. My name is Bill Enyard. I live at three oh one Aben Street, and in November I will have lived there for thirty-eight years, I think. So I, and I'm here to speak tonight about the dog park. First, and I'm gonna make three quick points. Number one, and this is part of a letter that my wife, Annette Eckert, submitted to the park board prior to their hearing, and I know the mayor's got a copy of it and our aldermen have copies of it. One of, and I'm not gonna read the whole letter, I'm just gonna read one paragraph. "One of the main purposes of the park, when it began, was to maintain green space and a positive atmosphere, rather than having an asphalt parking lot on Main Street. The dog park concept maintains green space and maintains the possibility of using it for concerts or weddings if it is booked and opened and cleaned by the Parks Department." Even with this extra work for the Parks Department, it is less than what they currently have to do to maintain the park. It is also less work for the police. It also provides safety to people walking by the park and children and animals who might wander into the park. The danger of drugs and needles, as well as human feces, exists now at the park. The second point I'd like to make is from the report that was prepared by Captain Todd Kyleback, Chief of Detectives. In twenty eighteen, there were twenty calls for the police department to that park, Everton Anon Park, twenty. In twenty twenty-two, there were one hundred sixty-nine calls for service. So it jumped eightfold in four years. And I would also particularly like you to consider Chief Ice Can't's report to you when you vote on this dog park at that park. Chief Ice Can't, in his report to you, states, "I have met with Belleville Main Street, Parks and Recreation Board, citizens from Neighborhood Watch groups, and many more citizens throughout the community over making Everton Anon a dog park. The citizens I have spoken to have been overwhelmingly receptive to the creation of the dog park, and as chief of police, I support this project fully." And along with Chief Ice Can't, as a neighborhood, I live a block and a half from the park, as a neighborhood resident for more than thirty-five years, I support the concept of making it a dog park also, in order to resolve some of the many problems that we've seen develop there over the last few years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more participation? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Jason Wilson. I'm a business owner of twenty-three years here in Belleville, Illinois. I would just like to introduce myself to everybody tonight, that I'm grateful to be here and to be a part of the process of what's going on, and I'm interested in relocating my business into downtown Belleville. I just wanted to say thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Any more public participation?
My name is Barb Swatner. I live at two eleven Aben Street, and I just wanted to make a point about the dog park. I hope you approve it. The fence can be moved or removed if later on somebody comes up with a different plan. It's not a permanent structure by any means. And I'd also like to mention the banners. I understood that the Historic Preservation District had already made their decision and determination on that, and so I was surprised this morning to see the city out working, putting up a different banner, and moving some other banners. And I'm just wondering financially how that can be. And since the Kerner house sits on that corner and the other two properties are also vacant, a banner at this point is kind of not necessary. We need to get the buildings up and running. We need income coming in, tax generation, all of that before we start worrying about banners. I kind of agree that, I'm not black, but I agree with Marie, that it is kind of not the most comfortable photo that's been put up there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more in public participation? Yes, come forward, please. I'll get back to you.
Hello, my name is Jason Bus, and I'm here to talk about the dog park on East Main Street. I live in that neighborhood, two oh eight South Charles Street, but I also own the rehab Victorian that backs up to the dog park, the, oh well, hopefully dog park. That little area there has been a problem, as everyone knows, for quite some time. I'm in total agreement that it should be changed. I think a dog park is a great idea. We do have a lot of problems there. If you're not familiar with it, just ask. I can tell you everything. There is really nothing that has been presented that's better than a dog park right now, and I think we should definitely move forward with that. So I am here to say, we do need to do something. Thank you if you're in agreement with me as far as making it a dog park, because it has been a huge problem. And for someone who has invested a lot of money in that area, I really, really am happy to see the change and the movement forward in this dog park. Thank you.
Anyone, oh, yes, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Sean McGelliget. It's kind of about the dog park, but I feel, I feel the issues with the dog park with homelessness and crime. I believe it stems from other issues, and that's of a vacant of properties. And it seems like the past about ten years, Belleville has been tearing them down, but after that, the town has left, fell off with a lot it has to take care of and mow. It's, it's kind of a out-there idea, but what if the town could give the historical committee a budget to pick and choose to save some of these properties? Oh, if, of course, the city oversight, they may not be able to afford it to do a full rehab, but a new roof could make it easier to sell to developers. And that's somebody, because my family rehab houses and stuff like that makes it a lot more appealing. It just, some thought, that just popped in my head, and it could help with some of the symptoms with vacant properties and homelessness and issues like that.
Thank you very much, Sean. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sandy Alvarez. I've been a citizen of Belleville since nineteen seventy-nine, so I've seen many, many changes here, the majority positive. I'm happy to see the direction the city's going in. However, when I heard about the dog park situation, it really struck a nerve with me because I've been a critical care nurse for over forty years and teach critical thinking and attend high-level meetings. And the one thing that I have learned is, you have to have a diverse group at the table who is making the decisions. You need a brainstorming session to have the openness for people to present ideas. You need to then investigate, discuss, and evaluate the evidence on what will work and what will not. Decision-making. I'm not privy to all of the meeting minutes and what goes on behind closed doors. All I know is what I've read on social media. I truly sympathize with everyone who has spoken about the problem in the area. But the problem is the homeless and what is going on in that park. And I just truly do not believe that putting a dog park, a fenced-in area that is available to only those who can afford it, is going to solve the situation of the homeless and the problems that they're bringing with them. I had, I've had the privilege of working with many extremely talented physicians, and the one that comes to mind in this situation is Dr. Omar Awad, who was a critical care specialist and pulmonologist at Memorial for years. We were at a high-level meeting discussing bringing in a new procedure. He listened to everyone. He asked, "Is there any more input?" And when no one spoke up, he said, "I believe that all of you are doing the best you can, and we are all trying to get the best result." Yes, we are capable of doing this, but should we do it? Just because we can do it, doesn't mean we should. And he turned and looked at me and said, "Sandy Alvarez, you taught me that when I was a new doctor here, and I'll never forget it. So I want to ask you, just because we can do a dog park, just because we can put a fence up, is that solving the problem? And just because we can, should we really do it?"
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hagberg?
Michael Hagberg, and this is also pertaining to some of the dog park. I want to comment first that there were no details provided in the packet about what area will be fenced or how it will be set up. There's, so the public really has a lot of questions and no answers at this time. And the general talk is that, yes, there's a problem with homelessness in that area, and making it a dog park is not going to solve the homeless problem. I think that we need to take a serious look at the restrictions that were placed on the churches and places like Salvation Army that are willing to help the homeless but have restrictions from the city that prevent them from doing so. And I think that if you think that creating a dog park is gonna make the homeless problem go away, no, it is not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Shane Born.
Oh, Dave Shane Born. My wife Sandy would be here, she's recovering from surgery. And I agree with the previous two speakers, this doesn't make the homeless problem go away. It's not supposed to. You know, the homeless problem is a lot bigger and needs to be solved at a much bigger level. But what I think is, this park as it sits today is not the most attractive thing, you know, and it's not being used the way it was fifteen years ago. There's a ton of people that walk their pets downtown twenty-four hours a day. You can see people walking their pets downtown. I think this would bring more. I think this enhances the values of the neighborhood to both the east or the south and the north of the park, because those are two nice neighborhoods. Now, people with those smaller yards that are to the north have a place to let their pets come and run, a much more convenient one. I think it's a place where people pass by every day and say, "Hey, look, Belleville has a dog park." Most people don't know that Belleville has another dog park, you know? It's really gonna enhance that. It will enhance, I think, attracting new residents to the city, yeah, because of that, because people will say, "Look, this city is trying to make itself more walkable, more of a neighborhood." So I think it enhances those neighborhoods. I think you'll find all those people downtown walking their dogs might like a place to sit down for a few minutes and let the dog off the leash. And I've not been at all the detailed meetings, but I do believe a ton of ideas were discussed at them, because I've heard summaries from most of those detailed meetings. So I think that's a, it's a good thing. I think it will enhance downtown and help to enhance the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Last chance. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. We will now have presentations, recognitions, and appointments. I need a motion to appoint Mark St. Eve to fill a vacancy on the library board and to fill the remainder of the term until May twenty twenty-five. Did you get those two?
I did, yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Schaefer, so moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims of payroll and disbursements, a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Whitaker, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. No reports, so let's go to oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Motions from the park board. Mr. Dittelman.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on eleven A one, motion to approve an agreement for professional engineering services with Gonzalez Companies, LLC, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, to develop construction and bidding documents for bicentennial park improvements.
Okay. Second.
Schaefer.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Dittelman?
Eleven A two, motion to fence Everton Anon Park at four sixteen East Main Street to make it a controlled access, membership-based park to include a dog park. Ferguson.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
As everybody knows, this has been a significant issue. First of all, it shows that people do care about Belleville, and all everyone on either side, thank you for your comments. We, Alderman Steele and myself, with Alderman Elmore and Alderman Weigant, did not look at this in a vacuum. We held a town hall meeting February twenty-eighth, originally scheduled for January, but how did I know it was going to snow? But nonetheless, we held it on February twenty-eighth. We did not get as many people as I would like to see, but we got people there. This was not held in some back room thing to do. I kind of bristle at that with people who does that to me. I wouldn't have had a town hall meeting if I didn't think it was an important issue that people should come and give their expressions of what they thought. People had a lot of ideas. It wasn't just one idea. It wasn't just a fence and a dog park. Some people thought about playground, other people thought about other things. We considered those ideas, and the park board considered those ideas at their meeting subsequent to my town hall meeting or our town hall meeting. They talked about it there, and the reasons why certain things would work and certain things wouldn't work. What I know is this, what we're doing right now is not working, okay? It's a homeless issue, yes, and hopefully the chief will come up and talk about this, but that's one issue. This is not gonna solve the homeless problem, though. I'm not even up to think that it will. But what it will solve is the problems that the people in that neighborhood are having to deal with. They live there. The businesses are near there. They have to deal with this. So what's happening now is, as I said, drug use, human feces, public urination, I've heard people having sex in there, et cetera, in the public, in that park, catcalling and guests and visitors walking in the street. Is that the image that you want for Belleville downtown? The answer is no. So while I don't have the perfect solution to all of this, and I don't pretend to, what I know is this, what we're doing is not looking to do something else. Now, I think Barb Swatner, the commissioner, and them, they go, "This is not permanent. Fence doesn't have to be there forever. If things turn around and it's something different, this dog for the park, it can be done. You know, it can be changed. It's not, it's not a permanent thing. But right now, we need to limit the access to the park in order to ensure that we do not have a vacancy overnight, the disturbances, I think somebody said two hundred and some calls from the police department. You don't think they have anything better to do than to go to that gazebo and throw people out there ten times a night? They do. I want them not protecting my neighborhood, your neighborhood, et cetera. I don't want them sitting there at the park constantly." So we have this, and Alderman Steele, myself, Elmore, and Whitaker, and all the others, we have this, the ideas, and those ideas are never off the table for the future. But right now, I think this is the direction to go. I am now going to offer an amendment to this, to the motion that's out there. The amendment is, it says the park may be reserved for special events in accordance with the same way any other park in the city developed could be reserved, with the park department receiving the application and approving or disapproving it based on their guidelines and procedures. That way, if somebody wants to have a concert in there, in the gazebo, you could. The park, dog park, will be closed for the day. They have to have our second dog park for that time, wherever the timeframe is, if that's permitted, you could have your concert, and people could come. It would not be restricted access. You could come in for the concert, you could leave, they close up the park, it's taken care of. So that way, it means both parks of it and allows the park to continue to be used, yet somebody has an event underway, et cetera, say somebody wants to get married in the gazebo. They could do that, with approval of the park, they could do it, it could be open for however many hours, they could do that, and they could leave. So the park is not going to be fenced off so no one can ever get in there and use it. That's not what's gonna happen. So that's my amendment to the motion that's out there.
Okay. I have a little discussion.
You need to second.
Oh, we need to second on the new motion.
On the amendment.
I'll second the new motion.
Does anyone else have anything to add to the motion? Yes.
Nothing to add to the motion, but comments on the new motion.
Okay.
So if, and just to get an idea of how this would operate, then if, if the park is available for other people to rent, then the day of the rental, who's gonna be responsible for coming and cleaning up the park so the other public can use it? And will there be signage placed that restricts dog access while the park is being used for another purpose?
It would be similar, Joe, to the same thing they would do at Belleville Park. If you rent a pavilion at Belleville Park, I expect the same type of response as that.
Well, I just want to register that those would be, at least off the top of my head, two issues that we would need to deal with. One, restrict access for dogs, and then also cleaning up the, there's Jason.
Jason, you can really answer it for you.
So the industry question about the pavilions right now, we don't necessarily reserve a whole entirety park, existing parks. We do reserve pavilions, so this would work the same way as that, say you wanted to reserve Everton Anon gazebo, you would pay your fee, we would send out a mass email to all the dog parks, we're stating the dog park will be closed on such and such date. Please see our one oh six North Sixth Street location, whatever our park addresses. Please see that if your dog park needs for this day, or if we turn it.
For hours.
Correct, or, or if we rent it by the hour. Right now, we do not reserve pavilions by the hour, we do it by the day, so that's something to be determined, but that's, that's what's at it all. To answer your question about who would clean it up, the dog park, the existing dog park does kind of have been floored. One of us really knew, it was people, the members took care of self-policing themselves. If someone was letting their dog relieve themselves and cleaning them up, we had other members calling in and saying, "Hey, you need to send such and such reminder, their dog's name is," and they, they would know who was doing it and tell us. Uh, they kind of, we kind of got away from that a little bit. Now, we're making reminders out again, please clean up your dog. So, you know, that is a small park, a small area in comparison to where we park. So I feel like it's going to be self-monitored, um, with, with necessary reminders as needed. I mean, I, I don't, I could be incorrect here, but I don't foresee us going in and having to spend three hours cleaning up this dog park prior to a special event.
I personally couldn't see anybody wanting to have a wedding in a dog park, but, you know. That aside, um, the design, we're voting on, excuse me, a motion to fence. A motion to fence the park is what we're voting on. Will the design go through committee and come back to council?
Can I answer that?
And vote on the design and?
We actually, there's been some things put out on social media that are not totally accurate, or accurate at all. One of the things before, uh, Chris even called, and Mary called a Ward Six meeting. For months before that, we actually had a meeting that was requested by Bellevue Main Street and the downtown merchants, and also other people were there. I believe probably there were maybe forty, forty-five people there. The police were there, the parks are wrecked, all of them were there. And the, and Aben Street people that had complaints about what had been going on. So, the rumor that this was done behind closed doors and that, uh, we had an anonymous donor that we don't want to let out is false. Because the Kern family, Ever and Anon Foundation, had donated that park many, many years ago when it became available. Only common courtesy would be to invite the people that donated and spent the money for the park to the meeting that we had before Ward Six meeting with the downtown merchants, Aben Street people, and Bellevue Main Street. At that point in time, after listening to Chief Ice Kent and to the Bellevue Parks and Recreation about the upkeep, and listening to the comments from the merchants and from Bellevue Main Street, the decision was that the best solution that everyone thought was the dog park. Instead, Mr. Kern said, I will pay for the dog park. Bellevue Main Street is working on the design with Parks and Recs. Uh, and here we have a person who has offered to pay for the dog park. And unfortunately, that gentleman has even been, been beat up on social media. A citizen that is willing to donate, and besides that, the gentleman is also donating technology, working with the police department, that is going to improve downtown safety immensely. So nothing was done in a, a manner that was unethical, even though that is how it has been portrayed. And I think that once you hear what, uh, Chief Ice Kent has to say, I think even when he presented the other night to the Parks and Recs Board, that many people were surprised by what has been going on there and what our chief had to say. So, I don't want anybody to think this was a fly-by-night. Just decide, that's not how we make decisions here in the city of Bellevue. So, that's on, only thing I have for discussion. Yes, Kent?
Well, just, Mayor, let me please, I, I have a question.
Okay.
Will the design features of the park come back to council?
Yes, yes, they will. Mm-hmm. Yes, Mr. Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was just kind of like wondering, okay, for myself, for visitors to our town, whether, whatever event, Garden of the Square. There are some people who do bring their pets on the road with them. Uh, for people who stay in motels or Airbnbs who want to frequent downtown, is there going to be a means for them to be able to utilize the dog park as well?
Oh, you bring up a very good point, and you know, I think that's something that could be decided. And maybe when they come in, they work with Bellevue Tourism, because they, a lot of people will make bus trips in for that, for those events. And maybe they could have their name on a list, and maybe they could get in contact with Jason, who could send them a one-day pass into the, to the.
I guess to, to, two comments. One, to follow up with you. Uh, yes, uh, we do have a, a short, I think it's a five-day membership right now. You just have to provide your, uh, copy of your rabies vaccination and pay a small nominal fee for a short-term membership. And to go back to Alderman Hazel, yes, I didn't contract an engineering firm to do a design or anything like that. I could tell this was going to be a contentious topic of discussion, so I didn't put forth a lot of, you know, what is it going to look like and all that stuff, but yes, it will go back to the Parks Board and then return back to this committee when it comes to any other decisions made. I was just trying to see, is it going to go before or I do anymore, really, is where I was at with myself? If that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thanks, Jason.
Yes, Mr. Ovian?
Because I've heard that basically there's other places that have problems with homelessness. I'd like to know if we have a solution for that, if Matt wants to comment on it, and then I have a comment regarding another location we're having.
I would suggest that you can find your discussion to the agenda item and not, not the ish, the overall issue of homelessness. This is about this park.
Why keep it just to the park?
That's the agenda item to be discussed, and that's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, um, thank you. So I sent you guys a letter and I sent you some statistics. Um, just to kind of give you an idea of the issues that we deal with as police officers with the park. I can tell you, this goes back to around twenty seventeen when we started seeing, um, a lot of activity, activity with the homeless. And I don't want this, uh, to make this out to be, um, that we're picking on homeless. We're not. We're enforcing their behavior, their criminal behavior. There are homeless that, that aren't involved in criminal behavior, but the, the homeless that we've encountered at Ever and Anon Park, it, it's full of criminal behavior. Three hundred and, three hundred and ninety calls since twenty seventeen. And when you say three hundred and ninety calls, that's just calls for service where we're dispatched or we call out. But there's hundreds of other times that we're out there doing checks that we may not even call it out, or we deal with somebody on the street corner that, that isn't called out. Um, so there's many more than that. You guys know the types of calls that we've responded to. Um, human feces in the park, um, it's uncalled for. Um, we've had two recent calls of people masturbating out there in public, in front of cars driving by, and in front of businesses. It's, uh, unacceptable. It's, uh, it's a lot of resources that we expend. A hundred and sixty-nine calls in a year. We could be doing other proactive police functions to make Bellevue a better place, um, than to be using our resources out there. And again, there, there's a lot of talk about, well, what are we going to do about the other homeless issues throughout town? Or are they going to go to another park, or, or what, what the issue is? We do have things in place. We have a meeting set up with the clergy about the meals. Every time I go to Ever and Anon Park, I actually went there today and I cleaned up just a pile of meals that were left, left behind that weren't even eaten. And on these sack lunches that are given out, um, they just remain in Ever and Anon Park and either Jason's crew or Police Department were cleaning up all that. Um, hundreds and hundreds of cigarette butts when there's containers for, to put your cigarettes in. Just so many things, so many criminal acts or ordinance violations that are going on with that park, and it just depletes our resources. And, uh, I'm glad we're here today because this really started in twenty seventeen, but the mayor and I and many other groups have, have talked and, uh, given input on this, and, uh, you know where I stand. I'm in support of a dog park. Um, I talked to many people at the other dog park we have, and we had some of the same issues at Rotary Park that we have at Ever and Anon. And we have, we do not have those issues at Ever and Anon, or at Rotary Park anymore. I remember when I was a, a young detective, working armed robbery cases at Motomart that stemmed from Rotary Park. It became a dog park. We're not having those issues anymore. It helps now that the police department's right across the street too. But we seen a, a significant change in Rotary Park. And those people that we were dealing with in Rotary Park, they didn't go to another park or they didn't infiltrate a neighborhood. Um, Scott Tyler, look at the great things that he's doing with you guys with, uh, demoing all these houses that are dilapidated, that are beyond repair. Um, he works his butt off every day, all day to get these houses down. Yeah, there's a lot more work for him to do. Uh, but it takes time, and that's another part of the homeless issue, is they're going into these houses. Chief Stinson is, is dealing with that with some of the house fires. Um, so there's many things that are going on in the city with, uh, housing, with the police department, with the fire department, um, with the churches, with Ever and Anon Park. This is just one, one piece of, of the, the, the puzzle that, that we need to fix.
Any more questions? Yes?
Just, uh, two quick comments about the trash and what, let's call it as poop. We're talking about poop. And the current dog park has a stand, a dispenser wore a bag, grabbed a bag. Jason's right, they do very well at policing themselves. So, they're picking up with this bag, there's a trash can right there with it. It works very well, and it's a lot better than human, which is not getting picked up. And, uh, yeah, I, I go with what the mayor said and other people said about social media. I've tried to read some of the garbage that's on there. It, it's, there's virtually nothing accurate in some of those statements that were made in that. And if you want to know, uh, anymore about the current dog park or these planes, or how long we've been talking about, how long we've been dealing with it, ask somebody in the know is all I encourage people public to do.
Okay, was there, so, do we want to review what the motion is reading? Thank you, Chief.
You have a pending motion to amend that needs to be voted on first and approved, and it would be too short of the motion as amended.
Okay, so would you like to reread the motion, the pending motion, please?
Oh, there's no way I have any clue what it was. I'll have to listen back to the minutes. It's basically, motion to fence Ever and Anon Park, four sixteen East Main Street to make it a controlled access, membership-based park to include a dog park, which may be reserved with the same guidance as our current parks. Is that fair to say? Yep, okay. And there, there is a motion and a second on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. To include a dog park.
Yeah, the, the motion to amend is already on, on the floor.
Okay, so, okay, got it. Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none? Jenny? Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
So the amendment carries.
So now you need a, a roll call on the, uh, motion as amended.
Go ahead. You give, let me go. Okay. Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, motions from traffic committee, Alderman Elmore?
Yes, uh, I can probably read the other unless there's some objection. Okay, motion from the traffic committee, a motion to remove parking meter and install reserved parking sign at two oh eight East Washington Street in the name of the applicant only. Eleven B two is motion to install a two-way stop sign in North Florida and East B Street. I can give you a quick history on these if you want, but those are the motions.
Okay, second?
Hazel?
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes?
Question on the, the two oh eight East Washington, this is for Airbnb. This is for Airbnb owned by Jerry Boyer. Uh, she did a fabulous job on this, uh, single, very small structure that has no driveway. Uh, the parcel is just purely a building that she bought from the church. The church is in full support of having a reserved spot, one reserved spot for, uh, tenants, uh, because it's Airbnb, no parking, no driveway, no alley. It is nothing. And it's right in front of it, which is not a problem unless there's a festival going on, and then it's a huge problem for the person who is, is occupied. I've got a couple of calls on, on this issue. I have others with Airbnbs now in the downtown area. They will be coming to you for reserved parking spaces as well, including a handicap space. Also, a business owner complaining that we're going to start taking parking spaces and making them reserved spaces, taking them out of the loop for parking for their businesses. So, just enough way, I have a feeling we'll see more of this. So, and we discuss that, we're prepared for it.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none? It's not, it doesn't require a roll call? Oh, yeah, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion from finance, Alderman Whitaker.
Any objections during the group? Motion's from finance, eleven C one, a motion to approve a contract with Cone Incorporated for emergency cellular phone service for three elevators located at the Southwest Illinois Justice and Workforce Development Campus. Equipment installation totals two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with a monthly fee of one hundred and five dollars. Eleven C two, motion to waive the formal bidding procedures and utilize Sourcewell Contract to purchase two new twenty-twenty-four M-two Freightliner twenty-yard load sanitation trucks from Elliott Equipment Company in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars. And eleven C three, a motion to approve city health insurance, medical, dental, and life renewal effective five-one twenty-twenty-three as recommended by staff and insurance brokers. So moved.
Schaefer, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call? Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, motions from police and fire committee, Alderman Anthony?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. I have, uh, two motions here, uh, which you all, like, were reading as a group. Okay. Motion to approve a contract with ESO for data, database replacement with first, data place, replacement, first due in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. D, eleven D, motion to approve contract with Lexapro in the amount of forty-one thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So move.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ovian?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Whitaker already seconded it.
I'm sorry?
Alderman Whitaker already seconded it. Thank you. Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else for discussion? If not, roll call? Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Jenny, under communications?
I can read them together, yes?
Yes.
Uh, could you say about twelve B?
Sure. Twelve A, Lincoln Theater, concerts three thirty-one twenty-twenty-three and four fourteen twenty-twenty-three. Request from Lincoln Theater to host the Schwag Friday, March thirty-first twenty-twenty-three, and Foghat Friday, April fourteenth twenty-twenty-three, six P.M. to eleven P.M. Additional city services, closure of ten parking spaces and city parking lot at corner North High Street and East A.
Schaefer, so moved. Any discussion? I'm sorry, who made the, who made the motion? I did, yeah. I didn't hear anyone else.
Second.
Okay. Okay. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve B, Neighborhood Barbecue, six seventeen twenty-twenty-three. Request from Avenue Realty to host Neighborhood Barbecue on Saturday, June seventeenth twenty-twenty-three, five P.M. to seven P.M. Street closure. Mascota Avenue from driveway of one twenty-two Mascota to North Side of Lincoln, four thirty P.M. to eight P.M. Will move to East End Park and Mascota Avenue is under construction.
Okay, second?
I don't have a motion.
Oh, that's right. Motion. Sullivan? Thank you, second?
Hazel?
Thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, um, the place that she wants to close off, um, is very, is traveled a lot, and this is on a Saturday. Um, one twenty-two Mascota to Lincoln blocks off that entire area of Mascota Avenue, which is very busy. People take that all the way down to, um, one seventy-seven.
Shelley?
I'm just going to say this, though. We close our streets for so many other things. I think they're asking for one time. And I, I, if we, we, if we do it for some, we need to do it for everyone.
I, I agree, except, um, I've had so many complaints from people of the streets being closed off, the main streets, East Main, West Main, and now Mascota, that I had to bring it up.
Okay, anyone else?
Just to clarify, Lincoln is open in this.
Correct, yes. It is literally just the driveway where her business is to the north side of Lincoln, so that section of Mascota, but Lincoln remains open. Aben will remain open and to East Main, oh, and, uh, Washington is open.
Okay. Well, do we include in the move to East End Park if Mascota Avenue is under construction with this?
Correct, that's part of the motion. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else with discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Do you want to do a roll call?
No, that's fine.
Oh, okay. All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, okay. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no petitions? So, we have resolutions now, and a motion to read by title only, thirty-four seventy-five? Schaefer?
Thank you. Somebody.
Steele?
Randall.
Oh, second? You got that?
I got it.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor, oh, we're voting. Okay, sorry, guys, okay. Jenny?
You're already on vacation.
I am on vacation. I'm having my first vacation tomorrow in two years. Fourteen A, resolution thirty-four seventy-five, resolution authorizing the future execution of electrical supply agreements and or natural gas supply agreements as recommended by Good Energy LP.
Whitaker, so moved.
Schaefer, second. Okay. So, motion to approve resolution thirty-four seventy-five? Yep, I have a motion and a second. Got it. Discussion? Roll, hearing none, roll call? Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Dillman?
Hi.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, under ordinances, motion to read by title only. Ordinances ninety-one thirty-three, ninety-one thirty-four, ninety-one thirty-five, ninety-one thirty-six, ninety-one thirty-seven, and ninety-one thirty-eight.
Steele, so moved.
Okay, second?
Alderman, Randall.
Got it, okay, any discussion?
Can we separate out the fifteen B, because I'm not familiar with why this ordinance is in your foot?
So, they're both denials, both fifteen A and fifteen B are motions you guys denied by zoning, and so we have to deny them by ordinance now. Okay. So.
Clarification on fifteen B, please. Is this that metal shed that we denied?
No, fif- fifteen A is Stop and Save, that is their metal shed. Fifteen B is the development here at seven North High, and they are both for denials.
Fifteen A is one.
Correct, that is, and that is for denial. Any, oh, so are we good?
I think fifteen B is North Arrow.
Oh, North Arrow Department, yeah, I'm sorry, not the North.
Are you requesting fifteen A and fifteen B? So, the Stop and Save, wasn't that the liquor license request?
No, this is the one that we had back in first meeting in February with the, um, the shed.
So, I have so many, okay, but, yeah, this is just the official action to deny, based on your prior.
I, I'm not quite sure what I'm doing yet. Yeah, so, so those two are denial, so am I doing these as a group, or am I? Yeah. Raphael, that's not a.
That's an enforcement.
That's not an issue for the council.
Issue at that point. So, we'll follow up on the violation letter that was originally sent, and then we'll work with them to get it removed. And if they don't, then we'll move forward with any citations toward actions, get it removed in accordance with the.
So, am I reading these together as a group? Okay, all right. So, and remember, A and B are for denials, okay? Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-one thirty-three, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance regards to case zero three, Jan. twenty-three, Stop and Save LLC. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-one thirty-four, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance regards to case zero eight, February twenty-three, North Arrow Development. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-one thirty-five, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending Article seven Traffic Code, Chapter seventy-six Traffic Schedules of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois is amended by amending portions of sections thereof. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-one thirty-six, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending Article seven Traffic Code, Chapter seventy-five Traffic Schedules of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois is amended by amending portions of sections thereof. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-one thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance rescinding the taxes imposed by ordinance number seventy-three forty-three and dissolving the special business district allocation fund there under Eckers Orchards. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety-one thirty-eight, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the sale, conversion of personal property, trailer at one oh six South Sixth Street, City Building. Schaefer, so moved. Steele, second. Okay, any discussion? Discussion, anyone? Okay, hearing none, roll call? Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Motion's carry, Mayor. Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. So, a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Randall, so moved, Dillman, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call? Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Ostoff?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Whitaker?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you. We will now adjourn for a brief executive session. I need a motion to do that? Correct.
Randall, so moved.
Whitaker, second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call? Are all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, okay. So, now we need a motion to adjourn?
Rothweiler, so moved.
A second? Schaefer. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
All right.
And thank you all for holding down the fort.